We live by commitment by New Hope Pregnancy Care Center Chaplain Kobe Goins.
Pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Holy God, we come to you this wonderful, beautiful day that you have blessed us with. We thank you, God, that this weekend we got to see your beautiful creation, Father, on Saturday. And Father, your beautiful creation yesterday and today. We thank you for your blessings over our community. We are praying, Father God, as a community, for those in Ukraine and Poland. Because so many in our community, God, have family members that are there right now. We're praying, Father, your sovereign healing hand over those countries. God, we're praying for those who are suffering right now, Father, and an end to the atrocities that are happening. But Father God, we thank you that in Bradley County, we welcome those who are from those areas. And Father, we welcome them with open arms. And Father, they find their new home here because, Father, they are amongst family and amongst those who love them. And we thank you, God, that you have made this community that way. And we pray to continue to be that way. Father, I pray for this meeting, that everything that is said and discussed is done under your name. And that, Father God, you direct everything that is talked about. Thank you for the leadership of Bradley County. Thank you, God, that we are a shining example to so many other communities in this country. And may we continue to be. May everything, everything be blessed by you, God. We ask this in your, in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain. Welcome, everyone. We have a full house today. And now a report from our county mayor, Mayor Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. I only have one thing today. We have a presentation for you here in just a minute. You know, we've heard a lot of talk about sludge over the last year at our landfill. And we've been working very closely with Republic for several months now to try to come to some resolve on the issue. And I think we have. They're here to tell you about it if you'd want to come on up to the podium. David Hollinshead and Mike Clausen, Mike is the general manager with Republic. They're here to make a presentation. And the, the good news is sludge as of March the first is no longer being accepted. I think it's something that many of you have wanted to hear for a long time. So, Mike, I'll turn it over to you and you can talk to them about it.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, presentation's up. Good afternoon. As Mayor Davis said, my name is Mike Clausen. I'm the general manager for Republic Services out of our sort of middle Tennessee business unit, of which Bradley County Landfill is one of, one of our sites there. I'm sure all of you already know this, but we, Republic acquired Sand Tech Environmental Services in late May of last year. Sand Tech had the operating agreement for running your Bradley County landfill for the operation of, of that facility. And so that's now our responsibility and certainly is a pleasure to be speaking with all of you here. As Mayor Davis has said, and if you would like to just go to our, thank you. I think you all have copies of this if you can't quite, quite see. So, as Mayor Davis had said, so after the acquisition of Sand Tech last year, and kind of overview of the quantity of that sludge that we were taking. And that sludge again is a wastewater treatment sludge from Cobb County, really Metro Atlanta. So that's the particular material we're talking about here. Really reviewing the amount of sludge that was coming here, listening to the mayor, listening to you all, listening to some constituents, understanding that was certainly a point, a point of contention, a piece that folks weren't really happy about. We decided to stop taking this sludge material effective March first. So as of about two weeks ago, that material is no longer coming here to the county from Cobb County, which I think is a, is a great thing and you all would agree with that. The other kind of piece of that is, you know, Republic, we're obviously a Fortune 200 company. We have 200 landfills spread across the United States. Sort of have a, maybe a more advanced level of how we handle solid waste management in communities. And so we have what's called a wet waste target. So in landfills, you know, you want to have, if you have too much wet material, it can impact the health of the landfill. It could potentially impact the stability of a landfill. It's harder to build something stable out of mud than it is out of dry soil, right? So we were looking at that. The Bradley County landfill was above what we like to see as our, as our ideal target for the amount of wet waste coming in. Also in talking with Cleveland Utilities, we've been noticing some impacts to the leachate, which is the, the liquid that comes out of the landfill that we extract and then send to Cleveland Utilities. So I've been working closely with them as well to kind of understand what's going on there. So all that is to say that the current conditions or the prior conditions just really weren't sustainable for us or for your landfill. And so that's why we made this decision. That being said, item three here, so the Cobb County sludge waste stream represented approximately 50% of all of the revenues for the Bradley County landfill. So that's both revenues to Republic and the revenues that come to the county as royalties, based on a percentage of the revenue that we come in. So 50% of all of the revenue coming in is now, is now gone. So what we're looking to do is a new strategies needed, which really balances the health of the landfill with the economic benefit that we all kind of expect. And we have an obligation to deliver as operators of your landfill. Next slide, please. So what that option here that we are recommending and seeking approval from you all as commissioners is what's called liquid waste solidification. So liquid waste solidification fills a key gap in the marketplace for industrial and off-spec liquid wastes, which cannot be discharged directly to sanitary sewers. So really important to distinguish this from, this is not bio solids, this is not sludge, this is not large out-of-state customers. These are, these are more local type businesses and industries that might have liquid waste that they're not able to put in sanitary sewers. By regulation, that liquid waste, in order to be disposed in a landfill, we first have to solidify it. So I hate to oversimplify it, but kind of a picture of what a solidification pits look like is up there. We're really just taking in that liquid waste within the lined footprint of a landfill, mixing it with something like a sawdust or maybe some other sort of bulking or binding agent to dry it up. And then just disposing it at the active face of the landfill along with all the other wastes. So liquid solidification is an extremely common program at landfills across the country, including the majority of permitted facilities in Tennessee. So this isn't something that's new or really cutting edge whatsoever. Most facilities in Tennessee and really the United States had the opportunity to. And we certainly see some of those opportunities, some of the closest landfills to Bradley County landfill are already doing this, already have permitted solidification pits. Important to also note that solidification is regulated by TDEC, just the same as, who's the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation, and governed by those same Republic Services standards that we kind of implement for the health of landfill facilities. So the ask here, what's needed to start a liquid waste solidification program? First and foremost is county approval. So TDEC requires that we have this meeting here and a resolution passed for approval by the commission prior to reviewing a permit application from us. From there, if they're getting your approval, we just submit a really simple, it's called a permit by rule. So it's literally just a three-page little document sent to TDEC asking for their approval. We've already had preliminary conversations with them. They're absolutely already indicating willingness for that approval. And from there, we really just have, everything else is on our, our shoulders. So we find some different municipal solid waste tons, which are those dry tons that we can mix with the liquid waste. Of course, staying below our tonnage cap, which we have as a requirement in our operating agreement with you. So the landfill cannot grow to a large regional mega landfill. It's capped at a certain number of tons per day and nothing in there changes whatsoever. And then we have a little bit of investment to make in some heavy equipment and other onsite infrastructure in order to sort of create this program. Again, there's no additional cost to the county whatsoever. Although the upside here certainly is that as we replace that 50% of the revenue, the county certainly shares in that as we grow the program. So our goal here is to begin marketing liquid waste in the local marketplace to the local industries and businesses for acceptance beginning in April. That's kind of summarizes the proposals that we have. I believe you have a, have a resolution in front of you. You'll notice in, on that resolution also, there's a specific sentence in there that says the liquid, accepting liquid waste, kind of a condition of that will be that we not, again, accept the bio wastewater sludge Cobb County. But I wanted to make sure you all saw that in writing. It's in the resolution, something that we're going to stand up and be not to do. So with that said, certainly happy to ask questions or back.
Mr. Black.
Sorry. You mentioned that other landfills are already doing this process. Can you name any of those for us?
Sure, the, the closest one by is in Athens. So that's the Meadow Branch landfill, which is a Waste Connections facility. So that, that's, that's the nearest landfill, so it'd be a very comparable program.
So if this was to be approved, I'm not saying it is or no, is it? How would it, if any, would it affect the lifespan? Because when we chatted about the sludge or whatever it was called back to that, I was told that that would not affect the life of the landfill. How does this new change affect one way or the other?
Sure. You know, when you talk about, that's a catchy song, though.
Commissioner Thompson's got the music on for our entertainment today.
No problem.
You understand my question?
Yeah, sure do. So when we talk about life of the landfill, it's all about the number of ton, tons that you're bringing. Because like landfills, the life is based on a permitted airspace. And so if you're bringing in more tons, that'll, that'll eat away the life of the landfill faster. So, you know, the, a ton of sludge contributes to depletion of airspace and site life, just like a ton of normal waste does. Again, all of this goes with saying, we have a tonnage cap here at Bradley County landfill where we cannot go over. That's in our contract. And so we sort of have, if we were to max out up to that tonnage cap, which we currently aren't, sort of a maximum amount of site life depletion that could happen. So all that is to say, right now, certainly if we take 50% less sludge, that's going to increase the site life because there's 50% less tons coming in, if that makes sense. But as far as the liquid waste replacing the sludge, there's going to be no appreciable difference to site life, both just coming in at about the same rate.
So, thank you for that. Because I mean, as you know, about a year or two ago, we invested in a monitoring system out there at the landfill. And from what Commissioner Hughes has reported, it seems to be going well with the reports that we're getting. In your opinion, does this affect that? Is it?
No.
Necessary or not necessary or?
What I would say to that, I'll maybe have two parts to that response. You know, I definitely, wastewater treatment bio solids are absolutely known to be odoriferous, to be pungent, especially when they're coming into landfill facilities. So, you know, absolutely part of our decision here to not bring those in is because we have an obligation to run that site as a great neighbor to everyone around us and as your representative to your constituents. And so it was important to us that we remove the opportunities for something that is notably pungent, waste streams. You know, the stuff that's coming in here is significantly more benign when it comes to odor. It's just going to be like a normal, a normal waste. And the other, the other piece, I think, that we would, you know, love to take a little credit for with the reduction in any odors coming in is we're making pretty significant investments in the landfill gas collection system. We've actually doubled the scale of that system the past year and doubled the amount of landfill gas that we extract from the, the facility and then destroy onsite in a, in a landfill gas flare. So that's the other piece that's really happening, that's made us be so much more effective in managing any odors onsite.
All right, so I mean, the ultimate, I guess, is I just want to know your opinion on the monitoring system with relate to this.
Oh, sure.
Just, I want to be super clear on this piece right here. If I understood what you said just a moment ago, that should this not be approved, you never know, then your decision not to take waste or whatever it's called from Cobb County goes back into effect? Or is that, they're totally two different things? You're not going to take waste from Cobb County anymore, no matter what happens with respect to this resolution?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, that's right, correct.
Last one, Mr. Chairman, Crystal, I'm glad you're here. Does this affect the contract that we've entered into them? Do you have to amend the contract or? So the contract doesn't have to be amended? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all here.
Thank you. Commissioner Peak and then Commissioner Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How long of a public notice do you have to give?
I believe it just this resolution comes in. I don't believe there's subsequent public notice associated with the.
Okay, I thought, I just saw on that last page where it said your requirements was a contract, was a public notice and resolution approved by the commission.
And I think as, I think as part of, and you all are more familiar with the process than I am in at least the public meeting. But I think that was sort of this, and then it gets put in the agenda for approval as a resolution at your subsequent meeting that meets the requirements for public.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Question on this, now do we know or do you know at this moment what exactly is going to be put in this liquid waste?
We haven't started marketing it actively. But commonly, the, the types of materials that we would target is you have a lot of off-spec weight products from any sort of like food manufacturing facilities, things that maybe go out of expiration, especially stuff like that. You have things that it could be, it's like dredging materials that are like wet soily type stuff that are, again, very benign that you can get mixed in there. There's some oils and greases maybe that could get put in there. So those types of materials, a lot of times you have aggregators of liquid waste who will sort of go to business-to-business for smaller companies, not really large industrial companies. But think of a company like Safety Clean or something like that. You see those vacuum trucks around town maybe. So they'll actually go and aggregate maybe smaller amounts of liquid waste from small companies than bring those to the facility, be those types of materials.
The reason I said that is because I was looking at the resolution. The resolution does give approval for that. But one of my main concerns is with everything else is that it's, it's kind of open-ended. If you decided to add something else to that, other than that, then you can add it at any time. And that's the reason I was, I wish we had an exact list. And then if anything else came in later that may, may not want to come in, then we could look at it and say, no, that wasn't approved. But that's the reason I was asking, asking the question for the exact list, what was going in.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, a lot like when we talk about MSW, which is municipal solid waste, there's just such an incredible breadth of different generators here locally, that being able to really specify every single one of those, almost, almost impossible. What I would say, though, is just like we do with special wastes that come into the landfill, special dry wastes, there is a very robust approvals process through TDEC that says very clearly, you have to profile, you have to have analytical, they have to agree that it's safe and responsible. So there is sort of a check and balance there with the regulatory agency, certainly, for every single one of these liquid waste that would.
I guess the answer from a question, or you answered my question, but a question towards that is you're doing advertising for it correctly.
No, currently we're not.
You're going to be looking for certain companies that'll supply this. You do know the certain companies that you're going to be targeting. With that, you can kind of guess what's going to be coming in. That's the reason I said that you should be able to supply something that's pretty close to what you've got or wanting to come in anyway.
Again, I really, you know, right now, we're such a preliminary part of this, trying not to get out ahead of our skis too much. Wanted to make sure we cross this important item off first, this important stepping stone. Certainly, I'm happy to circle back with some more information if that would be, if that would be helpful on specifics. But we have not actively gone in. It's one, it's one of those types of things where we know that the market exists here because there's competitors and other folks in the marketplace that are actively doing the same thing. So we know that market exists, but as far as, again, as far as specifics, I apologize, but I just don't have any of this.
Last question, have you ever been given a blank check?
No.
That's what this resolution is, is a blank check for you to do whatever you want to do with it. That's the reason I was wanting the exact, you know, what do you think is coming in? It's because I want to be able to go to my constituents and say, this is what we were told, this is what was approved. That's what happened with the sludge, we were told, but never did know. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Commissioner Hughes asked one of my questions, what, what kind of liquids that was. But and then I understand what you're talking about when TDEC regulates all those kind of liquids. And you're only allowed to accept those kind of liquids that fall under that parameter. So I understand what you're talking about and, but we do appreciate, and I do want to say, the first district does appreciate the sludge being stopped. And that, and that's good news for the first district. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cryer and then Commissioner Slater.
Yes, Republic does not own the landfill in Athens. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
I, I travel that road frequently, about three-quarters of a mile. Before I get to it, about a mile past it, inch, terrible. Do they take sludge into your knowledge?
They do. They have the contract with all the city of Knoxville sludge.
So they have the same system that you're proposing, but they still take sludge in?
Correct. I think there's a lot of reasons why those odors are happening, certainly. Certainly sludge could be one of them.
I'm not here to determine what's causing sludge. I, I didn't, I didn't, I just wanted to verify if they were taking it or not taking it because you said they had the same system that you're, you are proposing. That's the basis of my question. The next is how frequent does the state of Tennessee inspect this?
State of Tennessee comes out to Bradley County landfill on random, once every single month.
But they do do it every thirty, most every thirty days, give or take.
Yep. Yep, every calendar month they're out.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the removal of the Cobb County Sutton's sludge coming into the landfill as of March the first, are you taking any other sludge from any other companies?
We do take some sludge from Cleveland Utilities, so they have a wastewater treatment system as well. There may be very other, extremely minute from local industries. But as far as like municipal wastewater sleep, excuse me, municipal wastewater treatment sludge, no.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Reipert and then Commissioner Peak.
Yes, sir. I, I'd first begin by saying thank you for making those changes. I know the, those people out there deserve better and it sounds like that we're heading in the right direction. Next thing is this, and it was just answered, I, I won't ask it just slightly different about the sludge business. Do you know if, other than Cleveland Utilities, are we taking any from surrounding counties? I'll, I'll just sort of leave it at that right now. I've got one more question, so.
There's sometimes, but not, not as a recurring customer. So certainly sometimes a one-off load would come in possibly. But no, primarily, the only other, we had, we had really two sources. One was a giant source of sludge, which was from Cobb County. We certainly have, otherwise, no, there's, and, and that's mostly a market dynamics where there's other landfills that are just closer, able to accept those materials rather than Bradley County.
Thank you. And one more question, Mr. Cryer alluded to it just a second ago. But I was actually talking to the mayor of Mickman County last week and he was talking about the odor is still a, a really big problem there. And I know the several residents in that area that it continues to be. So if, if you could keep that in mind as far as making comparisons, that it almost is a negative comparison because of the people in that area are not very pleased at all.
Sure, understood.
Commissioner Peak, Commissioner Goins, and then Commissioner Winter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your solidifying tanks will be on, you don't have solidifying tanks currently, so you have to put those in. And that's what will solidify the waste that you'll be taking in.
That, that's correct.
Okay. And the criteria, you're saying anything that comes in there will have to go through the analytical criteria. So it'll have to be sent to a lab tested and then you'll have certain criteria for what you'll take and what you will not take.
Yep.
So that's probably what would help us a lot if we had a list of what those analyticals are. Not that we know what we're talking about when we look at a lab analytical, but it might help somebody out there and kind of give us a basis for what you will be taking in.
Sure, I, I can certainly, maybe the easiest thing to do is to follow up with kind of what our approval criteria is and what that looks like of how we judge any special waste that's coming in and go that way. It's maybe a little, a little hard, but I'm, I'm certainly happy to provide that information. Definitely, yeah, here.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Winters.
Could you walk us through the liquid, liquid consolidation process? Once, once you pick it up, walk us through what you do.
Sure. Again, not to oversimplify it, relatively straightforward. So we, we usually have some pits dug, but within the lined footprint of the landfill itself, we'll, we'll excavate some specific areas, we call them pits, and line those either with a roll-off box or something else that contains the material. Liquid waste will come in and we'll have the dry bulking material sitting there just immediately adjacent to it. We'll use an excavator just to put that material into the pits and really just mix it kind of manually with an excavator bucket until it gets to a consistency that we can pull it out and then put it in a, one of our onsite haul trucks and then just take it right to the active face of the landfill and dump it right in there with the rest of the common trash.
Commissioner Bright.
Sure. It'll, it'll, it'll be really similar to how our arrangements we have with all of our existing customers, you know? This is, is really, think of it like a special waste. So in, in landfill terms and solid waste terms, there's MSW, which is common trash, municipal solid waste, that's like picked up from households. There's C and D waste, which is construction and demolition waste, like dirt, rubble, that type of stuff. And there's special waste, which don't really fall into any of those categories and require a higher degree of analysis and sort of process control around them. So these liquid wastes are going to be effectively exactly like that, depending on, you know, sometimes we have one-offs. Sometimes we have businesses that are just going to come in. Maybe they have random loads. Again, they may be aggregators of this material. But possibly if there's a larger generator of liquid waste, especially locally, we would absolutely enter into a contract with them and kind of figure out, you know, obviously if they bring us more waste, we could have a more favorable rate structure. Yeah. Sure. Yeah. Sure, but that, that's right. Yeah, sometimes, sometimes we don't have formal contract agreements with customers. They're allowed, they're allowed to come in. But, you know, this is a much more controlled process. So if we don't, if we don't have contracts, we will absolutely have special waste profiles that have gone through that analysis process, been through TDEC, been reviewed by all org, areas of both organizations. So that's sort of the process control piece as opposed to a, a contract that we have with them. That, that's correct. That's our primary reason for, for looking at this. I mean, we certainly hope that it's a very successful program. You know, we've done some internal pro formas to look at it. And really, our, our, our top expectation is that we match that revenue. It's very possible that we won't, probably even likely, as we're getting the, the program off the ground. It's probably going to take months to get ramped up, sort of help make sure local businesses understand that. Sort of help make sure local businesses understand that this opportunity exists for them. Uh, but yeah, so it's, it, our goal is to replace that revenue, but it's very possible that we won't.
Okay. Commissioner Mason?
Uh, yes. I'm glad to hear that the sludge is going, going away. As environmental officer of Bradley County, when I was standing down on A P D forty, and when a truck goes by me and I about drop to my knees from the stench of the truck, and that's going in their landfill, that, that's a problem. Uh, and I'm glad that, that to hear that's going away, and I won't ever be for that to come back, so just tell you where I stand. Another thing, too, I've had a lot of constituents call about your fees, went away from cash and tougher folks. I know a lot of things are going to cards, but still a lot of constituents have cash. You'd maybe speak on that?
Sure. Uh, you know, we sort of did a new point-of-sale system at the Citizen Convenience Center, which I'm, I'm assuming is where focus is, it's just a, a single, single person out there managing that whole facility. And so, from a, the, a safety, sort of process control, not handling cash like that, especially when on Saturdays, we have so many, um, individual co- uh, folks, families coming through there. Um, the ability to sort of provide a great service for everyone using our facility is certainly expedited. Um, again, s- safer, more reliable from a, a business not handling cash perspective, um, and that's why we did it. Um, no, fees weren't increased with that, it was more just a process control. Now, I know, uh, we've had a lot of really favorable comments back from folks as well. A lot of people appreciate not really having to have that cash interaction. Uh, what I will say to that, though, is we've listened and understand that that was, um, a point of, a point of concern for a few folks. So, we have, um, resumed taking cash at the Citizen Convenience Center. Um, we don't, don't really broadcast that, but if folks just don't have any ability to, we've tried, we tried to work through a lot of things, but really, we want to serve people who need the facility, and so that's really our ultimate goal, and we have actually gone back to. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Hughes?
This, I swear, will be my last question.
No problem.
You've told several times, I've heard that this would just be for local companies, is that correct? Or you, will you be looking outside or Chattanooga, what have you, or will it literally just be Bradley County?
I mean, cert- no, certainly Chattanooga Marketplace will be a target, uh, for those waste materials and for the revenue. Um, so I, I say that where, you know, liquid waste is hard to haul. Um, there's other landfills in the area that have similar programs, there's other non-landfills that have similar programs, admittedly. And so, it's really not, like, we don't anticipate material is going to be coming from long distances because they will have to drive by other facilities that do kind of the exact same thing. So, uh, when I say, when I say local, I mean, not, not just Bradley County, not just Cleveland, but really sort of the, the local marketplace. But tha- that's what I mean.
Yeah, so in other words, there's no, nothing going to be coming from Atlanta or outside of the, the state?
You know, we, we looked at, we've looked at Atlanta, I was, okay, is this somewhere that we can bring material up from? Are there other, and, um, other types of wet waste that isn't sludge? Customers possibly in Atlanta or other places that don't have the same negative impact, but still have the same revenue upside for, for both of us here. Um, and again, the, we really, the, the market just doesn't exist, um, which is why we're sort of doing, doing this strategy, which the more diverse, rather than have like one big customer, we're expecting to have maybe fifteen to twenty smaller to medium-sized customers. Um, there's a lot of solidification that happens in Atlanta, including at some Republic facilities. Um, so, yeah, we, we definitely not expect to be getting significant amounts of liquid materials from the Atlanta market.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Commissioner Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had one, a few questions. I wanted to see if, uh, uh, you had mentioned something about Cleveland Utilities and, and you are accepting, uh, some sludge from them still at this time? And then the, that, the other question is, I, I hear that, that Cleveland Utilities is really good about the grade and the process of how they, uh, treat their sludge prior to bringing it to a landfill. Is there certain grades in the sludge versus their sludge versus Cobb County?
You know, it's, it's more of a, it's more of a quantity situation, so, um, you know, it used to be that there was something called undigested sludge, which was stuff that really smelled, smelled sort of like raw sewage. Uh, there's now a law in Tennessee that no undigested sludge can be disposed at landfills, so it goes through like a, a subsequent processing, a step at, uh, at wastewater treatment plants. So, as far as like the, the quality of the material, I'd, I'd say it's, it's effectively all very similar. Um, but it's more of a, a quantity material.
Quantity issue, okay. Cause what I'm hearing is that sometimes they usually put it out on farmland and things from.
Yeah, they do, that, they definitely land apply it as well. I think there's land application of sludge is certainly a, um, a common, I mean, City of Chattanooga does land application of their sludge, so, um, again, we, we take not a significant amount of this material.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Peak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One more question. The price point between the sludge and the new material that you'll be taking is what?
Excuse me, the cross point?
The price point.
Price point. Um, the new material coming in will probably be about a, a thirty to forty percent, um, higher than sludge that we were getting before. Again, we'll take a, a smaller quantity of this material, um, so we expect that's how we'll kind of make up the difference. There certainly was, uh, transportation cost associated with bringing that material up from, um, Atlanta, which was something that Santec and then Republic was paying for in order to get that material here. But that's really where the, the big difference comes.
Commissioner Goins?
And we, we absolutely, you know, as soon as that contract comes back out for, for bid, we one hundred percent are interested in taking that material. Um, unfortunately, previously, we lost that opportunity, um, and so, but, but absolutely. And you know, one of the other things I think is exciting is there's a lot of, that transfer station has been, um, closed in some cases because it's gotten so full, um, because of the difficulty getting in and out of the facility in Athens. We know that a lot of smaller, uh, you know, we call them mom and pops, but smaller local businesses, um, have chosen not to come to Bradley County landfill because they didn't really want to interact with the sludge, right? Being, I don't want to have to like be around the material. So, we're sort of excited to have more of those sort of small local contractors and businesses now be coming back to the facility because they just don't have to interact with something that's, um, so off-putting as the sludge was. I do not, off the top of my head, yeah.
We, we can find, we can find out from, from them, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for going through the gauntlet of questions and we're trying to, just looking out for, you know, previous things that have happened there, so.
Totally understand, but looking forward to working with you, obviously, either way. Um, I think, uh, Mayor Davis and those of you who are in the district have hopefully seen a significant improvement of how the facility has operated, um, odors and everything else since Republic has taken over, so look forward to continuing doing that, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Um, to my surprise, it's been great to work with Republic, and I think we need to remember that the two things, you got your cash back, those of you who had a big problem with that, and I never would have thought we'd be able to say we wouldn't be taking the sludge. Remind you, the sludge is legal, it's permitted. Uh, we couldn't go to them and say, you can't take sludge anymore because there was no way we could prohibit it, so we've tried to get to that point other ways, and I think we've gotten there. Uh, so, that's the good news, no, the, the, the large amounts of sludge are gone. But the solidification process is something that they would like to be approved. Uh, the state just requires commission approval before they go ahead with their permit, and that way they can replace the revenue loss, mylin, but not the tonnage. The, uh, if you did the math on it, it's less tonnage, but probably more revenue, so that extends the life of the landfill in essence, so. Thank you all, I appreciate it, and that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
I, I'll, let me say one more thing, please. Uh, I'm going to bring him in to, as, as recognizing him, you already have, but Mayor Brooks is here today. I think he wanted to come and learn more about landfills, in case the City of Cleveland wanted to go in the landfill business. I remember the day when they told us they no longer wanted to be in the landfill business, so, uh, but welcome, Mayor Brooks, we appreciate you being here. And as soon as that contract is up, I have no doubt he's going to be looking to come back to Bradley County because right now they're part of that stinking sludge in Athens, and they don't like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, reports from committees and districts, we'll start to my left, Commissioner Winters. Thank you, Commissioner Winters. Commissioner Reipper?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just want to mention one thing to the public, is this, um, right now on the education reform bill, all you're hearing is positive, positive, and, um, uh, I'm not so sure that, uh, as you begin examining that and looking into that, that it's, uh, quite so positive as, uh, we're being led to believe, so, um, so, uh, I'm just asking not only commissioners, uh, but the public, uh, do your homework and, uh, see what all is entailed in that new reform bill. And, um, i- in my opinion, it's, uh, more of a Band-Aid than it is a long-term fix. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reipper. Commissioner Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All is well in the sixth, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Chairman. Everything's well in the sixth also. The, the Road Committee, though, called a meeting for this Wednesday at eleven AM here at the commission room. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Slater?
All's well in the fifth today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Goins?
This district's looking well.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, I see a lot of citizens here from the Fourth District this morning, and I'm glad you're here because this is a work session. And, uh, I got a, I got a call last night that this issue was a done deal. It's not a done deal until after the voting session next week. And, uh, I'm glad you're here where you can, uh, either s- uh, express your support or your opposition to the issue. And, uh, we'll be glad to hear from you today, and, and I'm glad you're here where we can't hear it, and helps us make our decisions. So, uh, anyway, uh, I just want you to know that, uh, you can express your feelings today, and, and it will be voted on next Monday meeting. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Crye?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, uh, thank Dr. Case, Director of Schools, for being present. It's always good to have school system represented. The, uh, Second District is doing fine, thanks to Commissioner Mason for picking up all the tires. Uh, my daughter came out of food line Friday evening and experienced a sight that's unbelievable by one of those trees out in the parking lot, the tire dump. Somebody had came by and dumped a stack of tires inside the city, and that's such a prominent place. Get into the point of being ridiculous, tire stuff, and that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Peak?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know some of you commissioners are interested in the impact, uh, bill that is going through right now in, at the State of Tennessee. Uh, there will be one more hearing on that tomorrow afternoon, and we hope that it will be defeated. Otherwise, that could lead to, uh, commissioners in every county being able to impose impact fees as much as they wanted to. It would gut the current County Power Relief Act, which would give counties or citizens, it would give citizens no, uh, way to oppose impact fees. It would give the county commissions the ability to do whatever they wanted in imposing those fees. So, um, hopefully that will be defeated tomorrow, and there will be no more impact on building in, uh, the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All's well in the third.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Alford?
Yes, the, uh, Second District's doing well, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hughes?
As Commissioner Winters had spoke, we had a committee last week, uh, meeting at the Pi Center. Uh, Ms. Gottson is here, she wants to speak on any of that. So, okay. Otherwise, I have nothing.
Okay, like, oh, she's coming.
Oh, she's coming.
So, I'll give a little update because I just left the Pi Center again. Um, we are looking to move in as soon as possible, as soon as internet and phone get put in. Pi Center looks good, furniture's in, CO was granted last week, um, and so everything's looking, looking good. Um, extensions, excited for us to be in there. I had UT down this morning to look at our internet, look at those lines and such like that, so we are really excited. Um, we're planning a lot of our summer events in there with those big rooms and classrooms, a lot of our master gardener programs, youth development programs will be held in there, hopefully starting this summer, so, thank you for the support, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Hughes?
I have nothing.
Okay. Commissioner Epperson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I would like to say that we had a, uh, good productive meetings up there in Nashville, uh, basically dealing with the, uh, two bills that, uh, Commissioner Peak had just spoke about. Um, the County Powers Relief Act was introduced in two thousand and six, and basically that's gives the ability of a county, um, to impose an impact fee on all new homes. Um, we worked really hard on those triggers, there's our triggers within that bill, and those triggers have to be met before a county can impose those fees. The county that is currently wanting to impose that fee, it wants to change the triggers within the County Powers Relief Act, is looking at like nine dollars a square feet, so if you do the, the math on a two thousand square feet, um, average size home here in Bradley County, I mean, we're looking at eighteen thousand dollars plus about a fifteen hundred dollar building permit right from the very get-go. So, it's important that with housing being twelve to thirteen cents of every dollar that's out there, and that, that's huge. Uh, in our economy, uh, we, we are working hard to try to make sure that those triggers stay within that County Powers Relief Act. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Blake?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mayor, real quick, when she just said they're going to the Pi Center, that's a little bit fashion, I thought, what is the long-term plan for the building over on Church Street that they're going to be leaving?
There isn't one, we've been waiting on a date, no for sure when they would be out, and now it's very soon, so the building and, yeah, he's going to talk about it, but the Building and Land Committee will be asked to look at it at some point.
Oh, okay. We don't know, but that, that whole bottom floor now is empty.
Will be, yeah. It's not now. If he's, would it be okay to respectfully request someone to put the resolution that we've been discussing on the agenda?
Yes, I would, would be glad to put it on the agenda, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is that it, Commissioner Epperson?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moving into the agenda, item A, Commissioner Hughes.
Chairman, this is a resolution. This is a resolution to rezone from FAR Forest Agricultural Residential District to I One General Industrial District, property located at Wa- uh, yeah, it's Walker Boulevard and Dillard Road Northwest, identified by tax map ten, parcel fourteen, uh, and you can see those on page three and four. That was recommended by the Planning Commission for approval.
Any discussions on this, commissioners? I believe this is right in the middle of the industrial area, correct? Okay. Being no discussion, we'll move into item B, Commissioner Hughes.
This is a resolution to rezone from FAR to C one ru- or, and C one rural commercial district to R two high-density residential district property located at fifty-three ninety-six Bates Pike, identified by tax map sixty-seven, parcel forty-six. Those can be seen on page five through six. It did meet the requirements for the approval of the rezoning. Um, and the commit- or the planning commission did vote to approve that.
Any questions, commissioners, concerning this particular site? That's located along Kinzer and Bates Pike, correct? Commissioner Slater.
Yes.
And there were no issues, and that came out of the planning commission regarding the road or anything, road around that area or anything?
The only thing we looked at was the zoning itself. The requirements for the zoning wasn't met. However, until there's a pre-plan sent to zoning or to Bentley's office, we have no clue what's gonna go there. And at that time will be the point where we start looking at traffic studies and things of that nature.
So there's still been nothing sent to Bentley's office?
No, no, no drawings of any type has been sent to it.
Commissioner Peak, I'm sorry.
And preliminary plats don't get sent until someone is going to develop the property. So right now it's rezoning. Then they do preliminary plats after it's sold or something's gonna go on it. Just to clarify.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Epperson.
Go ahead.
And, and also I'd like to add to that, that preliminary, y- y- normally that's the, the course that it, it's taken. And, and for a plot this size, a preliminary plat would probably run in the, the, the network of probably thirty to fifty thousand dollars for a preliminary plat to be prepared for this site. Uh, it's, and then it's normal that, uh, the rezoning request happens first prior to the preliminary plat. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Commissioner Winters.
Um, why, why would, would we not know what's going in there prior to, uh, final agreements? Final agreements have already been made that owner, sell, and a builder can build, and we really don't know what's gonna go in there yet, correct? Do we? Is there a way of knowing what's gonna go in, uh, or it's already, already decided? To my question.
Commissioner Hughes, will you explain how that process goes with the planning commission?
The property owner is actually requesting the rezoning. I don't know that they're planning on putting anything on the property. I don't know that anybody, thing will ever go on the property. Until the plan is presented to us in planning, you, you just, you don't know. So it's, the only thing the property owner is doing is requesting for the, the rezoning of the property for possibly future. Now, that future could be twenty years from now. It could be ten years from now. We don't know. So.
So, and then at that point, they would come back with it, with the plan to the planning commission stating this is what we're.
That's correct.
Yes, Commissioner Winters.
And, and then, then what happens there with the question that Commissioner Slater just asked regarding roads and regarding school and regarding all the, uh, infrastructure that we will be responsible to deal with? When, when does that come?
That will start once the, whoever brings the plan in for the development. That's where Bentley steps in and starts doing these studies on how it's gonna affect schools, so, traffic, so.
Mr. Thomas. Come up and kind of explain that process, you know, you'll look at the impact, et cetera. Would you explain that, please?
Typically, we don't have, you know, the rezoning's done first before the engineering, the preliminary plating is done and all that. If the planning commission feels like a traffic study needs to be done by the developer prior to us approving that, we can, we have that right.
Okay. So all those variables are looked at?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Commissioner Slater.
I have to believe that someone somewhere has some idea as to what's gonna be built on these two pieces of property, or all these citizens wouldn't be sitting out here today.
The property owners are here, and they put in the request that it's a subdivision with townhomes. Don't, don't be illusoration.
And there's still nothing that has to be done with, in regards to roads or infrastructure, knowing that it's going to be townhomes?
Not at this point.
All right, Commissioner Slater. Hold on just a minute, Commissioner Hughes. If we can just go ahead with item C, because these are kind of attached.
Yeah, they're attached.
And go ahead and say that, and then we'll entertain some conversation from people nodding.
All right. Mr. Chairman, this is a resolution to rezone to, from FAR, uh, district to R two high-density residential district property located at fifty-five ten Bates Pike and identified by tax map seventy-five, parcel seventy-five. Uh, you can see those on pages seven and eight. And again, this was another one that was recommended by the planning commission for approval.
Okay. So now we have these two pieces of property, okay? So, a- and it's same, that's the same process that they would go through, correct?
Yes.
Bentley. All right. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thompson. Yeah, you, you sure can.
Uh, Mr. Step, would you like to? I've seen your hand raised. Are you gonna come forward? Can you come on up to the front here and tell?
Miss.
He wants to wait.
He wants to wait. Mr. Chairman.
He would prefer to wait until they, they refer. Mr. Step, that's fine. You can wait until the other people come up, and then you can answer those questions. That'll be fine. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I think a lot of the issue is that it's not that anyone really knows what's going on the property. It's just what the, the actual zone will approve. And the townhomes is just part of the zoning that, if you go to R two, you can have townhomes and high-density residential.
Yes.
It is meant for single, single dwelling homes, though, uh, with property owners, you know, buying property and so on. So that is, I think, is where people are coming from with saying it, because it, the zoning actually allows for, uh, trailer parks and so on. I think that, um, Bentley is looking at doing a separate zoning issue to kind of remove some of this to limit the amount of what people can see as far, as far as the approval for it. And, uh, but I think that's really where it's coming from, is people see the high-density and then townhomes meant, mentioned, they just assume that's what it's gonna be full of, and there's, there's no way of knowing that. It's just, that's part of the zoning, so.
I understand. Any, any other commissioner have anything to say before I call in a few people to come up to, to speak, to speak with their concerns, and we can have some, this is a good time. This is a work session, so we might as well, you know, discuss everything. Mr. Winters.
I, I, I think we all, all agree that it's the owner's right to sell his or her property. Uh, but we, as representatives of the whole community, are really concerned about the infrastructure. If there is such a facility put together that requires, so we all look at it as quickly as we can. I, I don't mean to think these questions are against a owner that's been very good to the community. That's given property to the school system there and, and also been a, been a fine citizen. So we're not at all questioning that right of ownership. What we want to look at is, uh, our responsibility may be in that, that procedure. So that's.
I understand that, Mr. Hughes. Absolutely. Commissioner Blake.
Hey, I probably need Bentley real quick. Um, bring him up a hundred times.
Kind of hang out front, maybe, probably.
So, hey Bentley, so, uh, Commissioner Hughes said it is currently zone FAR.
Yes.
And the request is to go to R two.
Yes.
Right? So we, we've talked a lot about R two and what that entails. Um, zoning one oh one, what is FAR? So if it was the, if the zoning request was denied, they would obviously say F, F A R. What is, uh?
With SIR there, right now, currently, they could do single-family homes or duplexes on seventy-five hundred square foot lots. But the, the zoning change to R two would allow them to do townhomes as well.
The townhomes is the big, big deal with R two, right? And all that. So, thanks. Uh, Crystal, let me ask you this on when we take up this motion next week, are we allowed to put any contingencies on it? So as, it's as is, sort of, as it's presented?
Anything else? Go ahead.
Okay, and if it was denied, what legal recourse, I'm not saying you're his attorney, but just from our side, he's, I mean, he's well within his legal rights to ask for R two, and if we were denied, he would be able to take us to court? Or take somebody? So if we were to deny R two, we had to have a pretty good reason why we would deny it. Arbitrarily. That's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Peak.
So in the FAR Bentley, that they can currently do chicken houses, pig farms, and then per seventy-five hundred square foot of a lot, they could do houses or duplexes, and the duplexes could be rental. With SIR, okay. But they couldn't sell the duplexes individually as a door, as a single family. It would be apartments if they did it on FAR right now. Okay. And the owner, though, um, we can't put contingencies on it, but the owner can put restrictions on his property prior to his voting. If he wished. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Peak. Okay. Any other commissioners want to say? They may want to say something after we hear from some, some people, but, um, yes, Commissioner Alford.
I had to listen to Mr. Williams, is it?
Williamson.
Last week. Is that property already been sold?
Go ahead. Mr. Williamson, you'll come up. I'm, I'm gonna recognize you to come up and, yes. You can pass those out if you want to. That's fine. Yeah, I still have it.
First of all, thank you for listening to me again today and giving me an opportunity to talk here. Um, of course, I've come up to talk about the same rezoning that we spoke about last time. I tried to write down my thoughts this time, so I don't blunder on y'all too much. But after the last rezoning meeting, I did call Joe Step the next day. Uh, we had a good conversation. I told him that I voted, you know, I voted against it and why I voted against it. Um, a couple of things that came out of that, took Mr. Thompson's advice, and I offered to buy the farm from Joe Step. If it doesn't get rezoned or if it doesn't go through, I offered to buy. Um, the other thing that came out of it, that Joe said that he didn't really understand what R two would appro- would allow when he asked for it. So that's a little frustrating, but it's his landing. Do what he wants to with it. But I just think it goes to show kind of how some of this is a little backwards, it feels like, that we'll rezone it before we know what's coming. We can know with a pretty good amount of certainty, though, that if this approved, if this zoning change is approved, the track will be developed either wholly or partially the way that you're looking at it on those pictures. And the reason that we can do that is that the person buying it has already done the math. They know that the current zoning does not allow them to get enough doors, so that's why they're asking for the rezoning. That's why they've put the contingency in the contract, that it has to be rezoned. And any developer acting prudently will sit down, run the numbers, see how many doors they can get. And then that is how you determine what price you can pay the farmer or the person for their land. You have to back into it. You don't do that and then figure it out on the other hand. Um, so the only reason to get it rezoned from what it currently is to R two is to do what you see, at least impartial or the whole thing. But the problem is that we don't know what they're doing. So you have to assume that they've requested the R two for a reason. Density. So just for reference, under its current zoning, you could get seven hundred and fifty-five doors approximately on that land. You could put that many new houses on a hundred and fifty acres. Approximately. That's about four to five houses in a. By changing it to R two, these numbers are a little up. You can get fifteen hundred and ten townhomes or one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three apartments by changing the zoning, by simply doing that, nothing else. So that is a concern, of course, of, of mine and I think my neighbor. Um, there's a couple of things I keep hearing from different commissioners and things, and I, I have this on here, and I just want to bring it up, and thankfully, the county attorney is here today that I spoke to about this a couple of weeks ago, and, um, I keep hearing this thing that if it's not illegal, you can't really vote no. But then thankfully, you already said what the commissioners have to base theirs on is, uh, capricious and arbitrary, which I don't say it as well as she does. Um, so I'd like to address a few reasons why this zoning change would be both arbitrary and capricious, in my opinion. The school, uh, at the last meeting, we heard from the school person that was there. The school can take a total of three hundred children. There's currently three classrooms empty, giving a total of maybe seventy-five to a hundred kids at most it could take. Of course, as you hear those numbers of fifteen hundred to almost two thousand new doors, the school can't handle that. The roads, the roads on Kinzer, Bates Pike, and Osment are currently not wide enough for two service trucks to safely pass each other. This includes fire trucks, ambulances, delivery and utility trucks. There have already been accidents on Kinzer Road with fire trucks and utility vehicles. Current and past firemen that I've talked to at the station on Bates Pike that this abuts to, describe the experience of passing another large vehicle as gripping the steering wheel and waiting for impact. That's how small the roads are at the current state. These roads cannot support a development like this. My opinion for the zoning is that I'm not against development in Bradley County. Um, we would like for that development to be done in a responsible manner, though. There is currently no similar zoning anywhere around this track in question. The closest R two zoning is miles away. To rezone this property to R two would lead to irresponsible and randomized community development, in my opinion. I believe that the city should be grown from the inside out rather than random pockets of high-density multifamily neighborhoods intermittently dispersed throughout rural areas. If the zoning change is approved, I fear this will set a dangerous precedent for similar developments from investors outside of Bradley County that could really care less what the county looks like in ten to twenty years. And to go a step further on this fear of voting no, if it's not legal, you can't vote. Um, I spoke to the county attorney, and if anyone ever in this, on this vote or any vote, this is something that my family wants to do to just, I'm tired of hearing it, is that we will cover any legal expense that the county incurs. The way this would work is that I would, the county will fight for you, and then I will make a donation to the county earmarked for that. But no one should be voting based, in my opinion, whether it's legal or it's not. The voters did not put you all in office to vote out of fear, but rather what's best for the county. And I will stand next to you for that, with you and with my wallet. Your constituents voted you into office because they believed that you would make decisions on their behalf that would reflect the best interest of them and the county. It is entirely within your power to promote responsible community development by voting no to this zoning change. Today, I've outlined, outlined several reasons why this zoning change should not, is not reasonable in terms of safety, practicality, and responsible community development. You also have many rational, logical, and valid reasons to vote no to this zoning change, or at least require a traffic study to be done at a minimum, like Bentley said. I mean, just something rather than just zoning a hundred and fifty acres R two and not knowing what's gonna happen. So I have, that's all I really have, but if anybody has any. But if anybody has any questions, as I said before, I'm a commercial real estate appraiser, this is what I do for a living. So I'm happy to answer any question.
Yeah, Commissioner Peak. Okay. Commissioner Slater.
So what if it was, what if it was zoned R one instead of R two, what would that do to the property?
It really doesn't change much, they could do about eight hundred houses, you know, seven hundred and fifty to eight hundred houses the way it is now. Yeah, he can do a lot more with it the way it is now than he could even if it was a FAR.
Commissioner Peak.
Um, you stated, I know the pictures that you sent up here, they're misleading.
I don't think they are.
If you'll let me comment first. So we've got plenty in the city right now. Specifically down North Lee Highway that was just developed, mixed use. We don't have PUDs in the county. So R two is how they would get to a PUD. In that PUD, and I'm not saying I'm for or against it, but I'm just trying to be devil's advocate here. The, these pictures are totally misleading because in a mixed-use development like Tom Kate subdivision is beautiful. He's got beautiful townhouses in the front and then he's got where Mayor Brooks lives right behind it, a beautiful um, housing development. So the pictures are misleading that you brought, number one. Um, on the schools, I know that people count doors and they think it's times two, but the census, the national census, uh, says it's point eighty per door in our area. So you would average that over time. Um, and the, what we could get right now is eight hundred and seventy-one homes for duplexes on FAR. So, um, what else did I hear that I wanted to bring out? Uh, mainly that, I just, I don't like the, the misleading part of it. We all agree that the roads have to be looked at, number one. We all agree of that, for sure. And then the schools, then you gotta count how many houses are gonna go in there if it's approved and houses go in there or townhomes go in there. How much tax dollar we're gonna get off that? And then are we going, that's, that's what you gotta understand. Are we going to fix the schools and the roads for this area? To be able to handle this infrastructure that we're going to vote on? That's what we really need to look at. With the tax dollars, are we gonna do that? Are we gonna fix Taylor School to be able to handle this? And are we gonna fix the roads surrounding it? And will our fire department be able to handle it as well? We've gotta look at all of that.
So I, I disagree with that, I mean, both, the pictures you have are R two developments. That's what they're zoned.
Not all R twos are like that, though, that's why I'm saying it's misleading, it's
You're, you're right, that he, the developer doesn't have to, and that's where I said you have to assume the worst case. You can't go in and say it's Tom Kate developing it and he's here standing here saying, I'm gonna do it just like North Lee. This is an out-of-town investor that no one here really knows that well. And we have to assume from his previous that I've appraised things. It's not Tom Kate.
And do yours look all like this also?
What, all my what?
When you develop, do you make sure yours are pristine or do they look like that?
I tore down car washes and built strip centers that look pretty nice, I think.
I'm just saying beauty is in the eye of the beholder is what I'm saying.
Well, sure, and for him, I'm sure it's dollars.
So that's the only thing I didn't like about your presentation, that is it.
I understand, I, so let's take your census, though. Okay, point eight. At townhomes, that's fifteen hundred and ten homes.
I don't know where you got your numbers for your townhomes, but our math isn't working.
It's an average of eight to ten doors. When it's, that's how many you can fit on typical R two land, that's where I got it from.
Per acre?
Per acre, and there's a hundred and fifty acres.
And where did you get your information? Cause we, we just got some from Bentley and it's not matching.
I'm sorry, what information?
Where did you get your information on how many doors per acre?
Asking about five different developers that just did it. What I could do it for, you know, how many, my question to them was, look, if you have R two zoning with water and sewer, how many, what's an average? Don't give me specific, just what's an average? And so I asked them, what can you do houses for? How many townhomes and how many apartments? Cause I wanted to understand what could be built there. I'm not saying that's what's gonna be built.
Okay, but in the eye of the beholder, basically what you're up here telling us is the same thing I just said. We've gotta look at the roads, the schools, the infrastructure around it and the fire department and what it's gonna do. As far as what's built on it, we can't be a judge, I can't go next door to my guy that's gonna build a house and tell him I don't like the look of his house.
Right, but that's why the
So when it comes to appearances, we can't even fathom that. That would be arbitrary, in my opinion, for us to even consider what it's gonna look like. So, that's why I was saying, I, I don't like the picture part of it, but I do agree with you. These are all the aspects that we've got to look at.
Yeah, we can agree to disagree.
Okay, Phil, hold on just a minute, Commissioner Offler.
Really, is it possible before we vote on this or delay this vote that we can get a traffic and a school study before we actually have any idea what we're voting on? The way you, somebody mentioned it earlier that could do something like that, I didn't know what, what we're talking about.
How much money are we talking about? Look, I'm happy to front some money to help make sure that it's responsible development. It's not even my land. And I'll throw money at it to make sure that it's responsible development.
Oh, so the developer is the one that does the study, is that what you're telling me? Well, could it be sent back to planning to request that? Just a matter of time.
But it's requested for R two, doesn't matter if the developer requested or the owner. But we're here for the rezoning, so it doesn't really matter who owns it. Question is, is the rezoning
Thank you, Commissioner Epperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to point out, uh, and like I spoke earlier about the preliminary plot, the preliminary plot will just, will show in detail and, and, and keep in mind, too, the preliminary plot is subject to change. Just like if someone, a developer would come in here and tell you exactly what he planned on putting on that plan development. When all the engineers and all the, um, stormwater and everything gets looked at, throwing numbers out like you're throwing out is misleading a little bit. Um, because it depends on the wetlands, how much, um, blue line streams are on the property. It will play into how many, uh, detention ponds that are required. And for, for the planning commission or for Bentley to move forward on it, he needs to have something that it shows exactly what this developer would like to, to move forward with. Uh, all this going on, to me, I think it's premature.
Well, just, I think it goes back to what we talked about last time. It does feel a little backwards. Because once you get it rezoned, you're not going back to FAR. It's gonna be R two.
And also I would add, too, that normally when sewer comes into play, it's common that lands get rezoned to R two, high-density. It's common, within areas that have sewer. And this area just obtained sewer.
Yes, sir, I understand. Usually it's around zoning that is comparable, R two doesn't just go out by itself, you'll have another R two or something typically is what I see, but you're, you're right, once it gets sewer, you're, you've just increased the value of the property.
A whole different dynamics happens when sewer comes into play. Which uses the land wisely, smart growth.
Would be great. The fears that they won't.
Thank you.
Mr. Williamson, I appreciate your, your, your time and your, your, you're obviously passionate about this and on your views and I appreciate that. Is there someone else that would want to speak, yes? If you'll state your name up here, cause you haven't been up here before. Even though I know you.
My name is Pamela Oynbee. Um, my family has lived in a Taylor community for ninety-five years. I don't have a problem with Joe Step selling. I have a problem with it being rezoned to R two because of what Mr. Williamson has said here and stated, and he knows R two is for the density. If someone wanted to buy his property, not rezone it to R two, you know, we're good with that. I know now that my road will not handle two fire trucks needing or two utility trucks. I live on Thompson Springs Road. I invite every one of you to ride out there and look at it. I know my husband has spoke with most of you, Tom Oynbee. He is not in favor of that. And as it's been stated, your constituents should be your concern. Not one landowner, not one out-of-town developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oynbee. Anyone else want to speak before Mr. Step comes up? Yes, ma'am. If you'll state your name when you get up here, ma'am, and you can adjust that mic all you need to.
My name is Patricia West. I live on Kinzer Road. My grievance today, and I'll get emotional about it because I'm passionate. My grievance is not against Joe Step personally. I'm sixty-six years old. I have known Joe Step. I was probably five when I knew what he was. I've watched him live in this community, I've watched him farm. I've watched him improve his land to the point he could. And everybody has a right to do what they want to with their property. But I've lived on Kinzer Road for at least fifty-seven years of my life. I left a little while, but I've come back to my home place. My daddy died at the age of ninety-one, he has lived in Taylor's community all but ten years of that time, on the same piece of property. So my whole life, I have seen Joe Step's farm. I can see it from the home I live in. I can see it from my mother and daddy's home. I see the traffic every day for approximately two hundred and forty-five students. Less than that, I go because some ride the bus. But I live on Kinzer Road where I see that traffic going to that school every day. Morning and evening. You can't pull out of your driveway between the hours of seven fifteen and eight o'clock because you can't get out. You can't get in or out of your driveway from two fifteen to three o'clock because of that school traffic. And this will happen for Bates Pike, it will happen for Kinzer Road, an increase in traffic. New Hope Road will also have an increase in traffic because students don't all go to Taylor School. Some of those students in those homes will go to Lake Forest. And whether they build townhouses, whether they build apartments, whether they build two or three, two or three hundred thousand dollar homes, that is gonna be a lot of doors. And all of you, except for Howard, knows where this is better than anybody else. He knows what the traffic's like through that street of Kinzer Road and New Hope and Bates Pike. So I'm asking you, like Mr. Williamson did, there needs to be studies done before you vote yes. And I agree with him as well that things are doing back, going backwards here. A zone should not be approved until studies have been done and a clear design placed to you as to what is going to be built there. Of course, I realize they could give you whatever they wanted to as far as building a subdivision or townhomes. And once the zoning goes through, they could even change that because R two allows for apartments, it allows for a lot of different things. Our community is a beautiful community. We're all very close, most of us. And a lot of us have family that live there and have lived there for years. So I just ask you before you vote that you do some sort of traffic analysis, that you do some sort of, um, making sure that I've lost my train of thought, but that's okay, I'm old. But I'm here just for my community. And the fact that I love where I live, I don't want to live anywhere else. And I think a lot of the people who are in this room from fourth district and Taylor's community, that's what they're looking for. They want a safe place to continue living. The high-density will bring more crime. It'll bring in all different types of people. And we just, we just want to be sure our community is still safe and that we can travel our roads at a safe pace. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. West. Yes, Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I was listening to the conversation that she was having and I've heard it several times, that we should do a study prior to the plot being brought in. The problem is, is that if we done that, be ready to do another one afterwards, because right now there's no way of knowing what the number is or what's coming in at all. So it would be a wasted amount of funds just to go to something to have to redo again, once the plot comes in to show exactly what we're studying, doing the study for in the amount of homes and so on that would be there.
Thank you, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Peak.
Um, I agree with what she just said, I didn't catch her name, but, um, I do agree, I, I, I don't like the apartment idea either. And there's several things in R two that we don't like. So I just wanted to state that before Mr. Joe Step comes.
Okay, Mr. Step.
I've heard, uh, let's see, and by the way, is that landfill man gone? Cause I've heard that's gonna put a landfill out there, I need to talk to him. But I've heard everything that's gonna be out there, I, landfill, uh, government, low-income housing, what else, oh, these apartments. You know, it's just been a barrage of things that because the R two does allow such things, so they tell me. But now I really don't care about doing this, but I'm gonna do it anyway. Mr. Williamson's sitting here. Mr. Williamson's tried to buy some of my property and I told him, as long as I'm farming, I can't sell it, I can't sell my hay field, gotta feed my cows. He did call me the other day. And he does have concern about apartments being built out there, which I find kindly ironic from a man that owns three hundred. But I told him that there wasn't gonna be any apartments. But then, as we talked on, I asked him, did he have children, school age? Yes, he did, how many, four, he said. Do they go to Taylor School? No, he said Taylor School doesn't have too good a reputation, we homeschool. He said he did give money to the school, though, which I'm sure that the teachers appreciate. So they can buy the kids that don't have the money to buy books and paper and pencils. So we have one other thing. Back on the north property line that joins him, he also told me that he planned to build a million-dollar house. And when he builds this million-dollar house, I'm saying it's not about the apartment. But when he planned, when he builds this million-dollar house, he don't have to look at nobody within a half a mile of it. So that's Mr. Williamson's, I think, biggest concern. As far as his, as his concern about apartment, I'm gonna restrict the property against apartments. If and when I sell that property, it would be restricted against apartments, landfills, government housing, it was some other big something, let's see. Trailer parks, yes, absolutely, it'd be restricted against those. So that should eliminate the concern of what's gonna be built. Now if, if I sell that property like it is, FAR, whatever, then it's not gonna be worth nearly as much as it is if it's R two, high-density. And folks, that's my 401K and I'm gonna cash it out for all I can. That, that's my reason for R two, if, if not, then it's gonna be, it's just gonna be worth less money. As far as the roads go, I agree that they, they need to be some roads built, some roads done. But I would ask the folks that live on Kinzer Road and these other roads, if they'd be willing to give just three feet of their land to build that road. It don't matter how many studies you do, says we need to do this or we need to do that, nobody's willing to do it, then you're not gonna get it done anyway unless you condemn it. So, that's just a number of things. And the school, my daddy went to Taylor School, I went to Taylor School, my kids went to Taylor School, my grandkids went to Taylor School. Doesn't know how in good Lord willing, in about five years, I'm gonna have a grandson, great-grandson go to Taylor School. I personally would never do anything that I thought would be detrimental to that school. They talk about the fire trucks that can't meet on the road. I agree, it's narrow, too narrow. Same about this, again, somebody's gotta give just enough land, get that But same about this again, somebody's got to give just enough land to get that road widened. I don't remember if, uh, Mr. Davis was the mayor. Were you the mayor, Gary, when they started the, uh, fire thing? Okay, you, he was, he was commissioner. Okay. These folks have all got fire protection, most of them, within five minutes or less of their house. Some of them more, but I'm talking about these folks that are sitting right here. Jenny came to my dad and asked him if he'd sell him an acre of ground on the corner there next to the school to build a fire hall. Dad told me he'd give him an acre of ground, and he did. That fire hall at Taylor School that affects all these people is sitting on an acre of ground that my dad gave them. So here's the thing. I'm just wanting to cash out my farm for the most money. I started not to do the apartment thing and not exempt or not, uh, restrict it from apartments because I had thought about maybe building two or three to have some income. But anyway, we're going to restrict it. One other thing about the roads that I would say. If you live on Porton Road, Carson Road, Fraser Road, anywhere down in there, and you don't want to drive through this development to get to town or wherever you're going, you can turn on Osmond Road. You don't have to come up through there. If from this development, it's a little bit unique in the fact that you can turn on Kinsler Road and go to sixty-four Highway. You can go up Bates Pike and go to sixty-four Highway. So I would doubt that all the traffic that'd be coming from there would be going on Kinsler Road. And really and truly, I guess that's, uh, that's probably about all that I've got to say is just, uh, for me, I'm getting a little old, and I'd like Pat said back there, I've known Pat all of my life about it. Mr. Williamson, I haven't known. He moved in there about three or four years ago, and I feel like he's done a real good job, uh, getting the folks to come out. And that's all I've got to say.
Commissioner Pete.
Joe, would it be all right if we made the rezoning contingent on you restricting the property?
Yeah.
Okay.
What do you want to know?
We were just curious if we could make it contingent on you placing the restrictions on the property, but the county attorney said we had to vote on it as is. But we know your word is your word.
He's got it written down. I see him writing it down right there, and what I told you is what I'll do.
I've got it written down. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Havers.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I do want to commend him on doing some deed restrictions, um, to try to quell some of the opposition, um, and, and their concerns. Um, and also he brought out some good points and things for all of us commissioners to, uh, to review as we move forward on this request of rezoning. Um, the roads, uh, usually are a forty feet right of way or a fifty feet right of way. There are ways to widen the roads without having to acquire more land. A, a good example of that was, uh, Twenty-Second Street when the city took it from the county. Half of Twenty-Second Street in the northwest section of Bradley County. Um, if you want to drive down it, you can see what they've done, and they've stayed within the right of ways. And they didn't have to take anyone's land or condemn it or anything. There are ways of widening those roads. And, um, depending on the traffic study, if they do, if the county does request a traffic study, it'll be to depend on the preliminary plat because the doing a traffic study prior to the preliminary plat is kind of premature because you don't know exactly how much traffic we're talking about until that, all that comes together. But that's, that's why I want to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Only thing I'd, I'd like to say about the roads is the roads out there go to the ditch. That's about it. So they'd have to be property given to widen that road or whatever because you got to have a ditch line. And, uh, most roads out there go to the ditch, and that's it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, could I?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Um, and basically, yeah, and that's correct. And there is a ditch. And actually, what happens is a culvert gets put in and catch basins get put in. And then the road goes over top of the catch bay, or over top of the culverts, and the, the roads become adequate. And then two fire trucks can pass and everything. A great example, like I said, is Twenty-Second Street. Just go out and take a look. The other part of Twenty-Second Street is owned by the county. The first portion of Twenty-Second Street is owned by the city. And that, that construction just took place a couple of years ago, and you'll see the difference between the two roads. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody, any, any other commissioners have any comment on this? Yes, Commissioner.
I just, I just like to thank Mr. Step for his, uh, fair way of dealing with this and taking care. You know, I just, man lives as many years in this community, and this is his family, and this is his friends. I, I appreciate you, uh, stepping up and making that restriction. You've been good, you've been good to Taylor's Community. You've been good to the Fourth District. I've seen that when we looked at the school out there and we needed some, some land. And, uh, you were out there to really assist the commissioners to make good decisions for that school. Thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. Winners. Commissioner Pete.
Um, Ms. Ombi. With these restrictions, and we can talk about it more later, but what is the consensus, do you think, of your neighbors with all these restrictions being put on the deed restrictions? And us looking at all the other aspects?
Yeah.
You can, yes, please.
Our concern is not the community growing. We're all about it. I mean, Bradley County, look how Bradley County's grown. You know, I mean, it, it, you know, it's quickly, quickly growing. Our schools are becoming better. I think if, if that is a, something that is in ink and, um, guideline that absolutely has to be followed by the law, then I think our, our family would be good with that. Our community would be good.
Well, you've lived there the, well, your family's lived there longest besides Joe Step, so that's why I was asking you.
Yes. My grandfather, um, my, my great-grandfather actually, uh, purchased the land in nineteen twenty-seven. Um, my uncle, my, my parents, well, my mother, my aunts and uncles, my cousins, myself, my daughter. These people right here, we've all gone to Taylor School too. You know, I mean, um, I get, you know, Williamson's family is homeschooled. That's fine. I don't have a problem with that. Um, I feel like our school is really good. Um, I feel like a lot of the schools in the county are really good. Uh, we have some good teachers. We have a good principal at Taylor. Uh, appreciate Mr. Step's family for providing land to the fire department. I knew last step. Wonderful man. We appreciate it. I feel like my grandfather would have done the same thing had he own land touching the school.
We appreciate your opinion. That's why I ask you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ombi. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman is the, well, the only commissioner that's on planning commission. I will assure you that, and Mr. Thompson, a request and impact study be done on that, that plaque, so we will have that done prior to.
Mr. Thompson.
I'd like to hear from somebody else, uh, since Mr. Step came up and, uh, said, uh, he was restricted against governed housing, landfills, trailer parks, or whatever. I'd like to hear somebody else speak to that.
Yes, sir.
First, uh, I'm Williamson native. I was born and raised up there, uh, on Thompson Springs Road eighty-three years ago. My mother chose to have a midwife come. She's wanted to deliver men. And I'm extra proud of my heritage and they, they came down from the Spooky Mountains when, when the US government made the park area up there. They happened to live in, in the vicinity that they condemned and made the National Forest up there and the National Park of the Great Spooky Mountains. And we've, I've got relatives up there that, that don't even know one. But, but anyway, the, I, I appreciate, uh, the Step family. I, I, I've known Joe all of his life. And I knew his daddy, and they was good people. And we have lived in that area out there, and they, and there's lots of good people out there. And God forbid us don't hear news about folks that does good for other people. And, and it, our news media, I, I just don't understand, but, but it's not news to, to most of us who here people get out there and do something good. If you go, if you go out there and do something that somebody condemns you and says, says you're a misappropriator dealer or doing something like that, well, but, but the folks out there in that, in our area and our community is, is basically all good people. Like I said, I've lived there all my life. And, and for Joe to step up and and come up and put those restrictions on, on his property, I think that I took and showed what the Step family is really like. They, they've always done for the community. I remember when I was going to Taylor School, I, I started out down there, and I'd like to find the picture of the old three-room wooden building that was down there when I started school down there. We had three classes in there and potbelled stove. And, but that's what it was like when I started Taylor School. And Joe Daddy, we was out there scraping with, uh, with hoes like we, like you used to work your garden with to clean us off a place to play basketball at Taylor School. And you can't dribble a basketball on, on grass. You've got to have college foundation to dribble basketball on. That's what we went through out there. And, and Joe's daddy, Joe, he won't remember it because he wasn't around at that time. His, his daddy owned, owned a team of horses, and he, and he lent us boys those horses to go up there, and Mr. Kimsey had the bluff there next to where Joe's house is built now, the more he lived. And and Joe's daddy, Leslie Step was his name, and his, he lent us that team of horses to go up here and snake the cedar poles off of the bluff down to the school so that we could put our backboards up to play basketball. And, and the girls, they played on one end of that court, and the boys practiced on the other. That's, that's how far that Taylor School has come. And, and I've done a few little things myself, and I don't like to, I don't like to boast about things about helping the school out, but but back when my wife was there, well, we, we, we had our children in school down there, and and it, it's, it's a good school. And I appreciate what Joe's done. I'll hush him about things now and let you, let you get back to your line of business. I know I know you just don't like to hear me ramble on. And I, but I appreciate all of you, and I, and I appreciate if you want to do what you say you want to do. And I, I like to see people and like Joe said that the handshake used to be a signed document as far as the old folks used to be, and now you have, if you go by a car, you got to sign a half-inch bunch of papers. And you used to, you'd go in and shake hands, and that was it. Now, I'll tell you, well, well, I'll tell you another one. When I built my house in, in nineteen sixty-five, on Thompson Springs Road, and they was a Cherokee Valley Federal Savings and Loan in town. Most of you will remember it. And Mr. Kelly was the guy's name. I can't, can't remember his first name. I don't remember signing anything. I remember shaking hands with that gentleman when I went in and told him that I wanted, I said I'd need fifty-five hundred dollars. And he's, he said, well, what for? And I told him that I was finishing up the, my house, and I wanted, I had to get a welder hooking. And the safety tank put in and all, all this, and and I said, I need that money, and I, and I, and my wife, we bought the furniture. And I thought, my goodness, I'll never be able to pay fifty-five hundred dollars. And, and I worked at here with although you remember from there, but but me and Mr. Kelly shook hands, and I don't remember signing a paper for that fifty-five hundred dollars. He, he wrote me a check and told me to take it down there and put it in the bank so it wouldn't, so I could just use it as I needed it. Uh, that is how things has changed, and and Joe is relying on the neighbors and all you people up here to take his word, and, and I will take his word. Because I know him. And this is like Howard Thompson, when he tells me something, well, I just kind of just fit in. I go over and he, you can all know that he's got the free market out there, and I go over and I talk to Howard, and, and him and me are good friends. And, uh, it's, well, that's my opinion. I mean, I don't know what he may want to kick my tail in and get me out of here. But I, he'll hit a problem wire because I'm not no fighter. I never was. I'll just lay down and play dead if somebody comes and jumps on my case. Thank you for your attention, and, and thank all the neighbors coming out. And we found out what's really going on. We was all guessing. It's just like Joe said, it's all, everybody's here said that there might be a sanitary land before we're out there. He's heard everything, or he did.
I'm sure.
Because he said he did.
Mm-hmm.
That's really, I know that it's happened. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Snead. Mr. Pete, and then Commissioner Blake.
So to clarify, if deed restrictions are put on this deed, then it doesn't matter who buys it from Mr. Joe Step. These things can never be done, and that's your protection. Um, also, clarify, Mr. Chairman, if I'm wrong, because Ms. Linda Cash is not here superintendent of schools. If more children go to the school, we get paid, or the state pays school system per child, they get more money, and it would actually help Taylor School to get more students?
Well, I mean,
Yeah, exactly.
Not the capital side of it, but as far as the paying for the student, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Snead. Thank you, sir. All right, moving. Yes, I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Uh, just a quick question. Bentley, just a quick question on all that we've heard here. Um, you chatted about having another zone created or what have you. Um, so walk us through that a little bit because I think... Um, so walk us through that a little bit, because I think, uh, Mr. Stepp has been grateful about it. Oh, he didn't have to do all this, he's going to, should address most of these concerns, but in the future we may not have someone like Joe Stepp do this.
I'm gonna propose right now we have R one. R three has apartments, travel trailer parts and B parts, take them out of R two.
So basically, if we, if we didn't want trailer parks, we didn't want apartments, we could, if we did want it, we would have to go to R three. So that, so in other words, this granulizes a little bit more.
Yeah.
And I guess it's not grandfather clause then, right?
Yeah.
So in other words, this is, I wouldn't say settled, but going forward, these, this R three should address a lot of these concerns. I'm sure this isn't the, the last time we're gonna hear this. Thank you.
Yes, alright. It would just be from that point forward. Yes, yes. Ms. Womby, yes? We can always work to improve though, always, and I think that's what we're trying to do here. Yes, sir. If you, if you'll come up, if you'll come up here, please, sir. Just, just, give, give us your name, please, sir.
Steve Suddles.
Okay, Steve.
I live on Thompson Springs.
Yes.
With, with his generosity, what, what moving forward, how many doors would be on the property if you eliminate the apartment? A home? How that's gonna work?
Mr. Chairman.
Again, again, I
Answer that.
Yeah, the, you know, Bentley, if you can answer that, I mean, until we see it, we won't know, correct? Right.
That's still a concern because of the traffic. Tell us not apartments.
I understand that, Mr. Suddles, but, but like Mr. Hughes said, they will look at doing a traffic study there to address those things as well. That's, that's a good point made. I understand that, that's a concern I hear throughout the county as well. Thank you. Somebody? Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, if you'll come up and speak here, or at least we can hear your name. Okay. Uh, that, 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 that's fine, that's, we understand where you're coming from, both of you, thank you. We're gonna move on, uh, to item D. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I didn't see your hand up.
My name's Tony Kaywood, I live in the community. I came here today to hear what was being said, so I would know firsthand, okay? We all have to think about the fact that, yes, Mr. Stepp has every right to sell his property for as much as he can get. I support that. Um, I also have lived out there all my life and know that property and know that we are not going to be approaching two thousand homes, no matter what, because there is such a large quantity of that land, it's not gonna be buildable. We also have to look at the fact that a lot of money is gonna have to be spent in infrastructure, in the development itself. A developer is gonna come in and spend the least amount to get the most amount, obviously, that's business. Uh, Mr. Stepp volunteering to restrict against apartments, government housing, and high density trailer parks, I commend him for that, uh, but when we're all talking about a traffic study, once this zoning passes, the traffic study would be done by a developer, and I may be about to speak out of turn randomly, but your office would have the right to say whether or not a project was allowed depending on that traffic study. The county's not required to build to meet use. The builder is required to build to the use that the study, study shows is possible, is that correct? Okay, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Alright, item D. Hey, it's a good point. Commissioner Hughes?
Mr. Chairman, this Mr. Chairman, it's still in with the, um, location, it's, I'm, Gail down here is County Archives building. However, it's the location that we made for the Sheriff's Department above the UT extension. This, um, as they're moving to the Pi Center, that is opening up the bottom of it. Uh, what I'm looking at is to hopefully send this to building land to get approved to use it also. Uh, Gaylor Miller has came here to speak about the issue of archives and how drastic it's gotten as of lately.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Miller.
Mr. Hughes contacted me on Friday and Holly, uh, has talked to Mr. Hughes prior to that. Um, first of all, let me say the archives, Tina in the archives has it, it's, it's the best it's ever been as far as, she's, she's out of room, she's out of room, that's it. I have a hundred and probably a hundred and fifty boxes now that's sitting in my office. We filed seventeen thousand cases last year, so we're in a new year, so here we go. We've got to get rid of old to bring in the new. Um, Mr. Hughes brought that to my attention, I have no, I have no understanding of basically what he's saying, if move it all there, take what we can, do what we can do. But Holly has, how many boxes do you have now? Hundred and fifty in her office. Yeah, and this doesn't have anything to do with Tina or that, Tina's just out of room. That, I've been here forty-two years, we did get an extension on the archives, which helped tremendously. But when you don't have anywhere to put them, you don't have anywhere to put them. So, it's, it's, it's becoming just a cycle over and over again as to where to put them. Um, and this is no slam to Tina, uh, Tina's, Tina's there and she's done a great job as far as organizing. She's organized out, we're boxed out. Uh, I have the jail, the juvenile, the courthouse, and we're just, it's boxed up. And if we could just somehow, with Mr. Hughes' plan, I don't know what the plan, what basically his plan is, but he just asked me to come to say today, just basically what we're doing with our, how we feel about it. Um, it's not that we can't, what's there can't go down and get, but it's up here and it needs to go somewhere to bring in the new. And that's basically what I told him on the telephone.
Um, Gaylor, my understanding is a lot of the documents, you know, some people would say, well, let's just put all those digitally and I have but you have to keep hard copies of a lot of documents.
They're permanent records.
Yes.
They're, they are permanent records, there's no, there, and we have started, uh, when we got the technology to do that of, um, scanning, which has been absolutely amazing, uh, and, and very, but we're talking about nineteen forty-four, nineteen forty-three, nineteen fifty-three when I was born, so we're, all of that's down there, so and, and even older than that, even in the eighteen hundreds, uh, the library took the historical part, some of it. But when Mr. Hughes called about the, apparently the property that could come available to accommodate this, um, I don't know if we would keep the current on site or everything would go there, we'd just have an archives offsite, um, as Holly uses it now. That's, and that's the only reason I'm here today, when Mike called me about our, this issue. Um, and as far as the boxes, I mean, it, first of all, it's a fire hazard. We have nowhere to put them upstairs, they're everywhere. Uh, so we're searching, scratching and searching for the old ones, so that's the only reason I'm here today and that's the reason Holly's here. So, whatever the plan is that Mr. Hughes is going to present, uh, it would be good, but this is nothing to do with Tina or the archives, it's just, the courthouse, the courthouse when it was built was not prepared for what was coming and it's here now, so we have to deal with it now, so that's why I'm here. But why I am here, I want to thank Tim Mason, Commissioner Tim Mason. He finished a job this weekend, um, my grand jury room at the jail is, looks awesome and I appreciate it. He and his crew have worked very hard to help us and, uh, I want to thank him personally for that. He texted me over the weekend, I thanked him that way, but I want to thank him personally here because Tim does a great job in keeping things going and, and the courtroom looks good, the grand jury room looks good and I really appreciate that and my staff does too. Thank you.
Thank you again. Commissioner Pete?
Uh, I don't think we have sent this building land, we already voted on this, that the entire building would be archives for anybody, I'm pretty sure.
I think we did.
We said as soon as UT moved out, that it would all become an archive building for the courthouse or Sheriff's Department or anybody that needed it in the county. We need to pull it, but I'm pretty sure we did.
Ms. Multer, could you look and see in that? And if not, we will send it to building land.
I, the, yeah, the best I can remember is just for the upstairs, we never did do the bottom level, but however, I, if it hasn't been placed, that was gonna be the request, is do that, I think it'd be a proactive stance to start because it's not just Gaylor, every department is starting to have problems with this.
Yeah, it's just not us, it's, it's all going there and she has, I mean, if you go there, if you've not been in the archives, you need to go. Uh, because it is very organized, but she's organized out. And we're growing and as I said, seventeen thousand cases last year, we're trying to get new cases in this year and then the old ones are still here, we have nowhere to put them. But now that, the voting, I don't know, I'm just here at Mr. Hughes' request to say what, that we have an issue. So, and I'm not the only one that has the issue with that, with that, but, uh, we are scanning now. Uh, and we're going back when we get time to scan old files, which is, which is wonderful, but you know, it's hard to go down and get the eighteen forty fours and scan all of those and what's not at the library.
Do that in your spare time?
And, yeah, my spare time, my spare time. Yeah, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Pete?
Mr. Chairman, can the committee meet, uh, next Monday at eleven thirty, if that's the only agenda item? Building and land members?
Yeah, you wanna call one next Monday at eleven thirty, that's gonna be the only agenda item for building and land. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is, is there personnel that sits in that building?
In
In the, in the building we're talking about over there, archives?
As of right now, the only person that's there is, besides the UT extension, which is moving out, is me, I'm there most of the time when I'm not at the Sheriff's Department itself.
But at eight, once it's set up as a full building, will there need to be staff there?
Uh, this is
Do you have to be in the building with it all the time?
If it's decided to make it a centralized location, and I'm just talking off the cuff, okay? This is Mayor Davis' employee as far as Tina, or it falls under him normally to employ it, so I hate to say that. Uh, that will be his choice or what have you, but it would make sense that if it was centralized there to have a person there.
Okay, thank you. Alright, active day. Communication, communication from the audience, anybody else want to speak for the commission?
No, we don't. We already did that.
Alright, great, announcement, the next meeting, Monday, March twenty-first at twelve, uh, whoo, I can't speak. At twelve o'clock here at the courthouse. Uh, juvenile committee will meet tomorrow at noon, juvenile center. Road committee will meet March sixteenth at eleven o'clock here in the commission room. Arts Alive will, is March eighteenth, that's Friday, ten o'clock at Lake Forest Middle School. And building and land will meet next Monday prior to the commission meeting at eleven thirty.